All right. It is 6:31. I'm calling this meeting to order the Champagne County Board Committee of the Hall. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Locke, present. Lockshin?
Here.
Michaels?
Present.
Pugh?
Present.
Rodriguez? Rogers?
Present.
Sexton? Smith?
Present.
Store?
Present.
Straub?
Yes.
Taylor?
Here.
Thorislin?
Here.
Vanish Neeran?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Covert?
Esri?
Here.
Farni?
Here.
Fortato?
Here.
Hanauer Friedman?
Here.
Ingram?
Here.
Patterson?
Here. All right. Can I have an approval of the agenda? All right. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, next we have approval of minutes for October 10, 2023, the regular meeting.
So moved. Lockshin?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, next we have public participation. Looks like everybody works here. Next, we have communications. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to... Saturday was Veterans Day, and I just want to acknowledge all the veterans that live in our county. There's about 11,000, nine to 11,000 veterans that live in our county, and just acknowledge their service for our country and their continued efforts to keep us safe and secure. So thank you for all the veterans.
Mr. Ingram?
This week is Trans Awareness Week, and as we have a larger percentage of folks in this country who have felt more comfortable coming out in that regard, or perhaps might feel that way, just a couple of things to note. Despite being a pretty small percentage of the population, trans folks are four times more likely to encounter violent crime. In 2022 statistics, for those who were murdered, the trans folks who were murdered, 83% of those were people of color, 71% of those were killed with a gun, 54% of those were black trans women despite being only 7% of the population, and 56% of those were either misgendered or dead-named by authorities or the press. As we've all kind of learned more and been exposed to more things over the last couple of decades, I think it's become pretty evident that regardless of how we feel about personal things, whoever we encounter probably knows themselves and their identity and who they are better than we do. So I think it's always important to try to meet people where they are. So if we could just be thinking about that this week, that'd be great.
Thank you. Ms. Michaels?
Real quick, I went and visited Ms. Covert in the hospital after hip surgery, and she seemed to be doing okay but was a little slow and was, at that time, hoping to be moved to another facility. So I did take her a note from the Highway Department and a cinnamon roll, and she did have a smile on her face. Thank you, Steve, for not eating the last one. But anyway, just so everybody knows, please, you know, send something, say something to Lorraine. She's kind of on an island right now, and I think that would be lovely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Something I want to communicate, it's kind of an awkward spot to announce it, but under other business, we don't have anything lifted but listed, but we will be going into closed session. We've gotten guidance from State Attorney's Office that as long as we read the notice, that that's proper process. All right. Next, we have finance. Ms. Fortato?
First up is a budget amendment, BUAA 2023-10201, Fund 10080, General Corporate Department 040, Sheriff, Increased Appropriations $4,548, Increased Revenue $4,548, Reason to Appropriate Funds Received from the JAG Grant for Gasoline Costs in Fiscal Year 2023. I saw Mr. Esri first, Ms. Michaels second. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Budget Amendment, BUAA 2023-1144, Fund 2685, Specialty Courts Fund, Department 031, Circuit Clark, Increased Appropriations $103,953.50, Increased Revenue $103,953.50. To appropriate funds received from the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, Adult Re-Deploy Illinois Grant. Somehow, they got Illinois in there twice. Do I have a motion? I saw Mr. Thorislin first, Mr. Farni second. Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Remember to do that. Budget Amendment, BUAA 2023-1148, Fund 2090, Mental Health, Department 053, Mental Health Board, Increased Appropriations $326,162.60, Increased Revenue zero, Reason to Cover Commitments to Agencies Providing Services Under Contracts with CCMHB. Do I have a motion? Mr. Farni, second. Mr. Patterson, Mr. Farni first, Mr. Patterson second. I would like to mention that Lynn is here. Does any, if anybody has any questions? I thought there would be, and I guess sometimes I'm just wrong. Moving on. Well, I guess we got a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Lynn, thank you for coming. Sorry, nobody wanted to talk to you. Budget Amendment, BUAA 2023-11-126, Fund 1080, General Corporate Department 031, Circuit Court, Increased Appropriations $50,000, Increased Revenue zero, Appropriation Required for the Increased Cost of Professional Services. Do I have a motion? Ms. Lockshin, second. Taylor, second. Discussion, I'd like to mention the Chief Judge is here. Does anybody have any questions? I would just like to say, and I've expressed this to the judge, as Finance Chair, are we, I do think it would be, it would be good to know the, this when we were discussing those two additional staff members because we paid for the additional staff in part through savings from this year, and we anticipate another round of bills. It's not so much that the bills are here, it's just having that full landscape of understanding when we're making those decisions, I think, is important. Although, I do, I will say, I did follow up a little bit with Tammy, and in her projections for our budgetary savings from this year, some of that was baked in. So she had anticipated that there would be some bills. So some of that was baked in. So, but, and this is, I mean, not just for the Chief Judge, but for all of our elected officials, the more that we can know about anticipated year-end expenses, especially when we're trying to navigate budget decisions, is important, right? And, and by no means is this the only office we've, there was five years in a row that I think we got 100K bills from the Coroner's Office for this exact kind of professional services kind of thing, until we were able to get his budget more clearly shaken out. And if you will recall, we have upped this line in 2024. I don't know if we got it right, but hopefully, we got it right. Also, in some previous years, the Public Defender's Office accommodated some of these fees, and this year, that is not so much the case. But I would like to say that I think the more, the more in-depth the landscape is when we have those budgetary conversations, the better for all of us. Any other, anybody else have anything? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody wanted to talk to you either. Budget Transfer, BUAA 2023-10396, Fund 2628, Election Assistant Accessibility Department 022, County Clerk, Amount $46,667.80, Transfer Required to Pay for Year of, End-of-Year Maintenance Costs. Do I have a motion, Mr. Ingram? I'm going to go with Bass as a second, Vanish Neeran a second. Trying to get people my periphery, it's hard. Discussion? Mr. Farni?
Did we find out why the clerk's software maintenance line has increased so much this year?
Admin?
Yeah, I'll take the heat on that one. I just got really distracted and did not follow up with him about that piece, but I can do that in the next week or two.
Thank you. Could you please report back to this body that information?
Yes, Finance Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Quick question on the Election Assistance Accessibility. I seem to recall that we increased the budget for 2024 for the clerk regarding election, election assistance. My curiosity is, why, was there, was it over-budgeted in 2023, and is it an over-forecast for 2024?
I will say that this budget is the one that moves the most wildly, especially because of staffing, because there's a vast difference in a general election on a presidential year than, or a national year than when it's just local elections. So you'll see a lot of fluctuation in this budget. One of the conversations, Chris Store will probably fall out of his cheer and joy, is that we've been having a lot of conversation about this might be a good candidate to try zero-based budgeting on. Like, it's something we've wanted to do in this county. Our previous software, our previous budget director told us that she would walk out if we tried to do it under the previous software, it just was not amenable to that. But this new software apparently is more flexible, and one of the suggestions is that the clerk's office might be a good one to look at because their budget is so different from year to year. In terms of, part of it is, I think, part of it, and we discussed this in my caucus, is he has a landscape of grants and budget, you know, general fund budget that he pays for his elections on, and the breakdown of where those expenses, like which category they go into, sometimes it shifts. I will say, and I also said this in the caucus, out of all of the elected officials who have gotten outside grant funding, the willingness to move general fund expenses to his grants, by far, the clerk has done the most moving of general fund expenses to his grants over any of the other elected officials. I mean, they've also received grants, and, but often then have used them for entirely new spending. That has not been the case. I mean, the clerk has moved hundreds of thousands of dollars of general fund expenses onto his grants. So, yeah, this is, he's changing it from, did he over-budget personnel? It looks like maybe a little bit more than he needed, yeah. It looks like he probably under-budgeted software a little bit, but, and my understanding is this is election software, so it's eligible within the grant. Dan?
I just have a quick question here, and just more of a statement. Moving this money from personnel, not a problem, to the software license to pay for end-of-year maintenance costs, I thought we had a contract on things unless this is a new software again, because it seems like we've replaced several things multiple times in that office, that we should find some kind of consistency with what type of maintenance fees that we're going to have on a year-to-year basis. Just a statement.
Point of information?
Yeah, I can just throw a little bit in. Part of that, yes, that would be amazing. The state legislature needs to stop changing things because they make new laws, and then we go have to change the software to accommodate the new law. So one of the bigger expenses that we've seen, when I was at the clerk's office, was the expansion of vote-by-mail required some pretty massive software overhauls that, you know, the manufacturers weren't really prepared to do, and then all of a sudden, their Illinois clients were demanding that it be done next week. So hopefully, that will taper off as VBM seems to kind of settle down a little bit as to how it's going to be accessed, but that's been part of that issue.
Any other questions or discussions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. If it's okay with everybody, I'm going to do 2 through 9, 10 through 25, and 26 through 34. Is that cool? All right. Resolution authorizing the cancellation of the appropriate certificate of purchase on a mobile home, Permanent Parcel 30-059-00043, 20-032-0204, 15-025-0709, 15-025-0295, 15-025-0208, 14-020-0116, 04-002-0072, and Parcel 04-002-0023. Do I have a motion? Ms. Michaels, Ms. Vanish Neeran, second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those, oh, we got a discussion. Bass?
Use the microphone, please. Somebody has a title, mystical driver. Nobody else has titles in their purchases.
I know the answer to that.
Thank you.
So, these tax buyers set up multiple different LCs usually, and they come up with some really creative names, and that's where that one comes from. There was a guy, what was the guy, five years ago, that bought the pond out on 57? It was something like Happy Joe or something was his name, and he was definitely not a happy guy, because I got to talk to him. So that's where that comes from.
Thank you.
All right, any other, nothing else? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Next up, resolution authorizing the county executive to assign mobile home tax sales certificate of purchase, Permanent Parcel 30-063-0047, 30-060-0057, 30-058-0127, -0199, 14-020-0167, 14-018-0009, 15, 15-025-0132, 15-025-0563, and 23-042-0027. Do I have a motion? Mr. Thorislin first, Ms. Lockshin second. I'm going to try to look this way next time. Discussion? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Just really quick. Last time we went through this, I checked the numbers, and a lot of them mismatched, and this time, I checked, spot-checked, and it was nice to see that the actual numbers lined up, as the money going in and the money going out. So whoever prepared this, thank you for doing the job accurately.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next up, resolution authorizing the execution of a deed of conveyance of the county's interest on real estate, Permanent Parcel 9, Parcels 92-21-16-432-014, 21-34-33-428-006, 20-09-10-225-003, Ms. Locke first, and, sorry, Mr. Smith second. Discussion, Mr. Ingram?
Just one curiosity, just from looking at all of them. All of them have a township listed except for the last one, and I didn't know if that was purposeful or if something was left blank. I just wanted to make sure we weren't pushing through something that needed to be amended. That'd be page 44.
Mr. Farni?
That should be City of Champagne Township.
Is that?
That's what 44 is, so.
Can we make a friendly amendment?
I'm more than happy to make that amendment.
Okay.
I guess that's me motioning for a friendly amendment to edit page 44, which is 18-32-23-157-002. Sorry, nope. I apologize. I flipped the page. That would be me making a friendly amendment to change page 44, which is parcel number 44-20-16-376-067, to include City of Champagne in front of the word Township.
I believe it was Ms. Locke and Mr. Smith, are you okay with that friendly amendment? All right, so now we're voting on it as amended. Any other discussion? Thank you for that incredibly detailed review of these things. Great board. All those in favor? Opposed? Next up, the auditor's report is on the website. County Executive requests for approval of property, auto liability, and workers' compensation insurance policies. Do I have a motion? Mr. Patterson, Ms. Carter, second. Discussion? You'll note that premiums went down slightly, so try not to faint. All those, oh, Mr. Store?
I did note that we only have $1 million policy for the board members. Do you think that'll be sufficient?
I mean, be careful, Chris. Trying to bring it back together. All those in favor? Opposed? Next up, the annual tax levy ordinance. Do I have a motion? Mr. Farni, sorry, Mr. Esri, second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Next up, annual budget and appropriation ordinance. Ms. Hanauer Friedman, and Jen, sorry. I read a lot of numbers. All those in favor? Or, sorry, discussion, discussion? Mr. Summers? Done.
All right, thank you. I wanted to take a moment to just acknowledge that this budget would not have been done without the assistance of the following people: Megan Robison, Mary Ward, Elizabeth Dillingham, Gabe Lewis, Jill Stewart, and special thanks to Travis Woodcock, who joined the county at the end of October and helped us immediately. And a very special thank you to Tammy Ogden. Tammy served as the Director of Finance from 2015 to 2023, and under her tenure, Tammy's financial acumen, detailed analysis, and collaborative spirit guided the county through difficult financial times and brought us to a healthy financial place. Because of her sound financial counsel, the county was able to capitalize on ARPA funding and our improved bond rating to undertake two major facility projects that are being worked on right now as we speak. County has a healthy fund balance to carry us through potential economic decline and a realistic and clear picture of the county's financial picture so we can adjust and plan now for a secure future for Champagne County. Tammy always demonstrates a commitment to the taxpayers of Champagne County and her fiduciary responsibilities, and we wish her the very best in her future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Point of information, I believe I have to keep the annual tax levy and the annual budget off of consent, is that correct? Okay. So, I don't have any, any other business. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. October 10th, in our last Cal meeting, I was asked a number of questions about the status of the Veterans Assistance Program, in particular, the ARPA allocation for the Veterans Stop the Violence program. So I have two updates that I would like to provide. One is related to outreach, and the other one is related to the state's attorney's opinion of use of the VAC funds going forward. So regarding outreach on this coming, let's see, no, it's December, December 2nd. December 2nd will be at the Rantool Business Center, will be the first event, it's from 9:00 AM to 1:30 on Healing Invisible Wounds Conference for veterans. So as far as outreach, this will be the first time, and as far as execution of the outreach program, that's December 2nd, 9:00 to 1:30 Saturday, and it's Stop the Violence Healing Invisible Wounds at the Rantool Business Center. And then Stephanie et al., we received a memo from the state's attorney regarding, the question was eligible expenses for the VAC under state statute can or cannot be, can or can it not be applied from the VAC funds to continue a program like Stop the Violence? The short answer is yes, which is good news. So the short answer is, should the Board of Directors of the Veterans Assistance Program of Champaign County decide to go ahead and tag along or continue the support for the Veterans Stop the Violence program, they can use those funds for that program. That's the end of my update on that.
Thank you.
And then one more item.
Go for it.
Thank you. So I know that I've been very particular about the treasurer's distribution of tax dollars from the collection and making sure it's fully distributed. So I want to say thank you that the treasurer, as far as October 20th distribution, has distributed all the funds that were collected, at least I'm sure, for the taxing districts that live in my district. So anyway, I want to thank you for all the support we received here and that the treasurer actually distributed the funds that she received.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so I don't have a chair's report, and then designation of items to be placed on the consent agenda. What I have is 7A1 through 5, B2 through, sorry, 34, and D1. Seem right?
All right, next on the agenda is Justice and Social Services, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Chair Patterson. First, we have the monthly reports for probation of court services from September 2023 and their third quarter report. Those have been placed on each department's webpage. And then we have the public defender for October of 2023. Item B is the Rosecrans Reentry Financial Report for September of 2023. I do not actually have any other business at this time. Does anybody else? No chair's report, and I don't have anything to go on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Next, we have policy personal appointments. Mr. Store.
Thank you, Chair Patterson. The monthly HR report is found in the packet. Oh, Ms. Michaels.
I have a question about the monthly HR report, if it's okay.
Sure.
Page 99, it could be just a typo, under the payroll information, RPC Head Start, 243 employees, 980,000, and then the very next payroll, same number of employees, 243, but 467,000. There's like a 527 or 515,000 swing, so I'm wondering if there's a typo, if that could just be fixed for the next time.
Yeah, it is. Anybody? Michelle?
Yeah, we'll look into that and report back.
Thank you. I didn't catch that either. Under item two, appointments and reappointments, we have resolution appointing Oliver Clark to Deputy Sheriff Merritt Commission, term ending November 30th, 2029. We have a motion, Jen Locke, and second by Jen Straub. I got that right? Discussion? I'll throw my back out. Resolution, appointing, I'd like to do a... Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to do items B and C as an omnibus without objection. Resolution, appointing Danielle Chenoweth and Norman Davis to the Public Aid Appeals, terms both ending on November 30th, 2025. Motion, Samantha Carter, second, Mike Ingram. Discussion? No discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, item D, resolution appointing member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term end, oh, appointing Cindy Cunningham to the Zoning Board of Appeals, term ending November 30th, 2028, and that's in your yellow packet. Motion by Eli Hansbauer and second by Jenny Lockson. Discuss, discussion. Mr. Farney.
I'm hoping somebody can explain to me why we're replacing three incumbents.
Mr. Summers is kind of anxious to explain why he made those appointments.
Actually, I was anxious to see if my microphone would work, but current ZBA a little while ago did not pass either of two ordinances that were put forward by zoning and planning that would have updated our current wind and solar ordinances and bring them into compliance with current state law. And as a appointed board, their job is to present ordinances to the county board for approval. They chose instead to pass no ordinances. They did not pass an ordinance that would bring us into compliance with state rule. And as a appointed committee, they still had the responsibility, whether they were in favor of the ordinances or not, to bring us into state compliance, and they chose not to. For that reason, I'm replacing three of those members.
Mr. Farney. I'll be honest with this board, I see this strictly as retaliation against the current members of the ZBA. Since I came on this board, the wind farm, solar energy farm issue is the single thing I have been contacted about by constituents who actually live in areas that will be affected by proposed changes to an ordinance and affected by state law. I have read every minute of the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Environment and Land Use Committee since the beginning of this year. At every instance, the public, the people actually affected by this legislation and by this ordinance have been in opposition, and the Zoning Board of Appeals did what their constituents asked them to do. If we are now being told that we, whether appointed or elected, I really don't care, have to vote the way that a county administrator, a county executive, or edict on high from Springfield goes, and totally disregard the proper opinions of people who live in and are actually affected by legislation, there's no reason to have a county board. Have one person come out and just say, this is what we're doing. The three members of the Zoning Board of Appeals who are being replaced tonight have done excellent work. They took the time to listen to their constituents and to vote as the constituents presented information. Nolan Herbert's seat sat vacant for several years. We have trouble getting people to take these unpaid positions, yet we're willing to throw them out because they don't vote the way that a couple of people say you have to vote. It's wrong. If we want people to participate in our government, we need to let them do their jobs. Obviously, it was a 7-0 vote. Anytime you have a unanimous vote in favor or against something, it either means it's a really good idea or it's a really bad idea. And so evidently now, if it's a really bad idea, the policy in Champaign County now is, you vote against it, we're going to take your position away. It looks even worse that it's happening in the middle of when we're discussing things about the zoning ordinance. We have a big vote next week. This doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy about it, and I really don't care what kind of opinions I get from executives, from state's attorneys. I'm listening to the people that I have to go to Thanksgiving dinner with. I'm listening to people that have lived on their property for 100 years. If I was on the Zoning Board of Appeals, I'd have done exactly what they did because it's the right thing. This is really bad precedent. The executive is wrong on his appointments tonight. I ask that you vote no on all three of them. I especially ask that you vote no on Ms. Cunningham. And the reason being, at least the other two candidates have some experience, some knowledge, some work history of something that could be even loosely related to zoning or building or development. Ms. Cunningham has applied for multiple boards at Champaign County, that she is more qualified to be on other boards than this. This reeks of politics. We can do better. Thank you.
Mr. Esri.
Yes, thank you. To add to what Mr. Farney just said, again, it was a 7 to 0 vote, and the idea that we were replacing, going, potentially going to replace three of them at this point in time, I would assume then maybe the other four will be up for replacement automatically when their terms are up. And again, with the idea that finding people to fill these seats has not been easy. It wasn't that long ago, ZBA was basically non-functioning because they didn't have enough members to conduct meetings. So that puts everyone in the county who relies on ZBA to do the job in a bind. It's not a job, again, that they get any compensation for. They made a vote. They passed it on to the county board. Ultimately, it would have been passed on to the county board anyway. The county board, their advisory, what they do is not the final word. The county board has already overridden the ZBA. The big one recently was when the ZBA said no thanks to the solar farm on the north edge of Homer, and the county board said, nope, it's okay anyway, despite Homer not wanting it. If the ZBA isn't going to be listened to and things like that, why, from the way I look at it, why the big deal now that, well, what they did is not what we wanted, so even though we can override, potentially override what they did because we have the actual authority, why now is this one vote, or lack of a vote, if that's how you want to put it, but no, it was a vote, lack of action, I should say, but it was an action, why now does that constitute replacing the members? These members knew what they were doing. You don't think they didn't think about it? They maybe even lost some sleep over it? The public that is coming here, has come here to meetings, to E-LUC meetings, to zoning meetings, they know what it means for the county. They're not dumb. They know it is likely going to result in a lawsuit. They aren't that stupid. You could put it in the words of, that's the rock that they're willing to die on. It means that much to them. The ZBA represents the rural unincorporated areas of the county. They have nothing to do with Champaign-Urbana, what goes on inside the city limits within St. Joe, with inside Sydney, inside Philo, Urbana, yada, yada. These people were doing what the constituents wanted them to do. And because of that, oh, you're out of here. You were willing to take time off from your schedule, two times a month usually, attend meetings, listen to the public bitch at you because they didn't like what you were doing at times, but that doesn't matter. You're out of here. That's all I've got to say.
Who had their hand up first? Was it Stephanie? Dr. Fertaro?
Yeah, I'll speak in favor of Mr. Summers' motion for two reasons. I was on the environment, so I totally agree that the Zoning Board has the authority and needs to review and decide the cases based on what they believe is right, but also based on compliance with law and the existing zoning ordinances. The current board that is members of the Zoning Board, when I was on E-LUC, we had a joint meeting over the wind ordinance, and what they said was, not only would they not approve any wind farms, not only would they not amend the zoning ordinance, when we were trying to get them to amend it before the state law was passed, they said they wouldn't approve anything with the existing zoning ordinance that had been in place in a decade. The Zoning Board is supposed to follow the zoning ordinances as they're written, and they flat out said they weren't going to. They flat out said, if we get a case before us, we will not approve it based on, not the new one, the existing one. We also were willing to work with the Zoning Board to try to pass an ordinance that reflected the community's concerns within the strictures of state law. And listen, I don't live there, and I appreciate that they're voting their conscience, and that's a rock that they were willing to die on, but it's not a rock that they die on because when we get sued, the county is going to have to be, who has to pay for that. Nobody from them. They have no finance, they could decide whatever they want. It will be our liability. As the Finance Chair of the Board, I cannot comprehend that we are willingly, knowingly willing to not only not bring our zoning ordinance into... willing to not only not bring our zoning ordinance into compliance with existing law, but that somehow the executive saying to the people whose job it is to uphold that law, that he's wrong to replace the people who said it. His job is to appoint people into those positions. And whether that they have, and I'm sure, I wouldn't want to be on that board, I'll be blunt, it sounds miserable, right? But all of these people that are being appointed live in the area that you're talking about, they're required to, right? All of their addresses are there. They're also neighbors with all of these people. They'll be hearing the same cases and the same, and making their own decisions, right? But to Mr. Farney's, should this be read as, "There's consequences for refusing to work with this board to not only come in compliance with law, but come into compliance with our existing zoning ordinances?" Yes. The answer to that is yes. Absolutely. The executive is absolutely right for doing this. It's a shame that it came to this point. I personally, we tried hard not to have it come to this point, but it did, because there wasn't a willingness to even have a conversation about, with the zoning board, about the reality of where state law was going, or where our current zoning ordinance currently exists. And at that point, yeah, they have to be replaced, and it's a shame.
Well, I think Jeff had his hand up before me, but I don't know if you've withdrawn your hand, or, I don't want to step on your spot, so. You're right. Just a few things. I served on the zoning board for 10 years. Eight years as the chair. These were not the first times we had contentious votes about things we weren't happy about that had a lot of public input, because I was the chair when we did the original wind farm ordinance. And we had, I think, something like 18 hours of public testimony before we even started working on that. That set of meetings outlasted some of the members on the board. But in the end, we put together what I thought was a pretty good ordinance. About two and a half, three years ago, it was clear we needed to update the ordinance we had. It was getting old. Technology had gotten ahead of what we had, and I and John Hall and the ELOC board directed the zoning board to look at making it a little more modern, a little more current with the time we had. There was, of course, a lot of public input. It's not the first time we had a lot of public input. In the area around the Manlove Gas Storage Facility, we had an ordinance called the Pipeline Setback Ordinance. At that time, there was nothing that prevented you from building a house about 20 feet away from one of those gas lines. And if you remember, in the late 90s, we had a Roman Candle, which I lived very close to, that lit up the sky for a nice portion of the night. The sun rose that day in the north at about 2:00 in the morning. And so we had to work on this ordinance, and we had all the arguments that the wind farm had. We were following the guidelines from people who make pipelines, who set statutes, and the setback from a pipe of that particular diameter was quite distant. It was 300-plus feet. And we had people say we were taking unconstitutionally their land. In particular, we had a developer who wanted to put a bunch of houses in a section that was ringed by these pipelines, and it would, of course, substantially reduce the amount of homes that he could put into this section. That development thankfully never happened. I think that, you know, we put some houses up there too close to what we have. But we took a lot on ZBA, a lot of public input. All of it was against the Pipeline Setback Ordinance that we did, all of it. But we were also advised that if we were to allow houses to be close to this in the future, and one of these pipelines failed again, and we blew up a house, or somebody's backyard, because there was nothing that stopped you from putting your swing set right over the pipe, didn't matter, that the county would be liable, because we hadn't done something to prevent something like that from happening. So we voted for the pipeline ordinance despite the fact the public was all over us, because that was our task, was to, in the end, do what was best to protect the most people. During this wind farm update, as we know, there was lots of protest, and then the state stepped in. And there's various reasons to think of the motivation of the state stepping in. I'm sure the industry had something to do with it. I'm also sure that the hodgepodge of different counties' ordinances had something to do with it. It would be impossible to cite something in Illinois if every county, and it was getting that way, had a completely different ordinance for wind power. So the state stepped in, and we have this state law, whether we like it or not. Personally, and Aaron maybe will attest this too, we worked really hard on ELOC with the ZBA, and we had this joint meeting, and the ZBA just told us to stuff it, basically. They just weren't going to even talk to us, that we were wasting their time. And that's fine. They're their board, and we're ours. But I resented the fact that it had gotten to where the state stepped in. We were on the way to making an ordinance that had things, not just about setback and tower heights, but about advanced lighting control and other things to protect the public, but at the same time allow people who wanted these on their, cited on their property to have a fair chance to have them. And the state stepped in and changed all that, and we have to be in compliance with that. And the state's attorney memo that we got explains that better than I ever will. So I agree with Steve. We had a ZBA who, you know, was given a lot of public input by the people that live out there, and I was one of the people that lived out there too. I was a Newcombe Township resident for 20 years, right next to the gas power, the gas lines, and probably next to wind power soon. I still have ties to that area. But the ZBA needed to work with us in a way that made us compliant with the state, and they refused to do that job. So I think if they want to continue to refuse to do it, then it's within the executive's purview and this board's purview to vote for it, to put other people that maybe will look out for the liability for the county, and that's all the people in the county. So, that's it.
Mr. Ingram?
I'm sorry. Not to belabor, basically echo Dr. Portato and Mr. Thorslund, but regarding a couple of the things that have been kind of mentioned here, I don't, we represent mostly Champaign-Urbana districts. I do not live in the country. I've spent quite a bit of time there. Depending on which way I drive to my Vermillion County families, family dinners, I can drive through a couple of different wind farms to get to their farm. And I've had a lot of conversations about those things with them. It's a contentious issue, and it always has been. I will say that there have been times where I have had to make votes on this board and others because of what the state law or statute was, and I had to explain to people who were upset about that, that we needed to do that in terms of not getting sued, because that's additional taxpayer money that would be lost. And certainly, I understand the idea of a hill or a rock to die on, but I suppose if that's the way that you're going to phrase it, then this is how that works then. Because if you're going to make a symbolic vote to say, "We're not going to be in compliance with this thing, this is our stand," we still have to, our stand has to be like, I understand hearing from your constituents that are in that area, I don't hear a lot from constituents about wind farms generally, but I got, I got one neighbor that asked me about it and said, "I don't want us to have to lose taxpayer money on lawsuits," which is not super indicative of an entire district, but at least I heard from one person. So I think we all have different things that we have to figure out, but oftentimes we have to tell our constituents why it is that we have to comply with state law, and then explain to them that if they want some sort of change when it comes to that, that they have to talk to their state representatives and their state senators.
Mr. Jobb?
We've spent the last couple of months, or I've spent the last couple of months coming to these meetings, being reminded that I've had it really easy since I've been in public office. We've done a couple of budget cycles now, and we have not had to make some of the decisions that we've had to make in the last couple of months. And we've all sat around these tables, and we've looked at each other, and we've made some really hard decisions. And we've looked at each other, and we've even had Jim Goss say like, "Hey, we need more revenue," which is not something I would have thought four years ago. So I guess when I'm thinking about this issue, and I am an urban, you know, I have an urban district that I enjoy very much, so I'm not going to pretend to know all of the issues here. That is not really my job, and I am certainly not going to say that anybody with an opinion on this has less knowledge than I do. But what I am going to say is, where in the budget that we just agonized over will we find the money for these kind of lawsuits? Because I'm not willing to make any more cuts.
Seeing no other hands up, and I, oh, I'm sorry.
Just real quick, could we vote on these individually, please?
I think I've only, we only have one under consideration. No, that's fine. I spoke with Ms. Cunningham, I've kind of, her name was kind of mentioned specifically, and I, she spent a fair amount of time going around a district that she wanted, that she sought to serve as a state representative. She wasn't elected, but she went around that district and talked with a lot of people. And I'll just say that, while that might not be a specific, she may not have a specific technical skill that she's bringing to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I'd say that she has certainly talked with an awful lot of people in her, in her area, and has probably at least as good a grounding as anybody I could imagine that we might appoint. And as for, as doing unpleasant things, for five years of my life, I helped to cite landfills, sanitary landfills in another state, and bringing unhappy news and being criticized, something that I endured a lot. And nobody wants to live next to a landfill. And to me, that comes closer to a rock to die on than a solar farm or a wind turbine, in my own opinion, which is my own. And if there's no other, oh, Ms. Michaels, would you care to?
Yeah, I would. Hearing all of this, I appreciate everybody's comments. I certainly am, from more of a rural area myself, and I got a lot of calls to you, more on this than anything else. And I know it's difficult, but once again, back to the point of what it is, is we're appointing liaisons. We still have the final vote right here in this room to say yes or no, to stop things or let them go. So in the back of our mind, as boards change, or need to be changed, or whatever happens, we still have the bottom line. So we can replace all the board members we want, but we still have the bottom line right here in this room.
Thank you. If there's no other comments or discussion, I think we'll go ahead and vote on the, on the issue, on the resolution, appointing Cindy Cunningham to the Zoning Board of Appeals. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
I think the ayes have it. Thank you. We'll go on to resolution, appointing Christopher Flesner to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Term ending November 30th, 2028. Ms. Locke?
Thank you.
And Mr. Patterson, second. Thank you. Discussion on the appointment. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion seems to pass. Resolution, appointing Brian Anderson to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Term ending November 11th, November 30th, 2028. Is there, Eric, thank you, second, Mr. Patterson. Discussion of the motion. Seeing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
The motion passes. Next item is resolution, appointing Mike Smith to the County Board Liaison to the Rural Transit Advisory Group. Term ending November 30th, 2024. Do we have a motion? I, don't be shy, Jeff. If you want to make the motion, please, please say, "Thank you." Ms. Michaels, did you intend to second?
That would be good.
Okay, thank you. Discussion to the motion. Mr. Smith, do you care to speak to your?
I'm happy to do what I can for rural transit for the county. I got to get into it and get my hands wet. Looks like they've only had one meeting so far this year, but, and it needs a chair and a couple of other things, but I'm anxious to get going to represent the board on that transit. Most of it will be in Rantoul with over 2,000. There's a couple, 30, 40, in the other neighboring towns, but most is in Rantoul. So I'm anxious to learn more.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for taking that on, Mr. Smith. There is a list of vacant appointments on the website, and applications for appointments also, and I'm sorry I didn't review those. I know that we got a lot of boards to appoint to. The next is number three. We have three job content evaluations, committee approvals, looking for approvals for the number 3A, approval of the creation of a deputy collector and partner engagement lead position in the treasurer's office effective January 1st, 2024. Do we have a motion? Ms. Vanitze, there or not? Thank you, Beth. And second by Ellie Hansbauer Friedman. We're trying to.
Hanhauer.
Hanhauer? Damn. Okay. And thank you, Ellie. Discussion of the, of the, of the motion, of the motion for the, Mr. Farney?
My first comment is a question, just to make sure I understand this. It says there's no request to the Finance Committee at this time. Does that mean that, and this could go for any of the three positions, does that mean that they're already in next year's budget, or they're just creating these and not budgeting them?
Stephanie, would you care to speak to that?
I could speak to this. So the mitigation specialists and the paralegal are two things that we did fund. The paralegal, we funded a while ago and then discovered we don't have a job description for, so that was cool.
Okay.
The deputy collector, this is a new position that is not funded, that is The deputy collector, this is a new position that is not funded, that is not in 2024's budget, but it's a title that she would like to have, hopefully sometime in the future if we could find the funding, but this is actually getting that process. I mean, ideally, it should actually go in this order, where we create the title and then fund the position, not we fund the position and then are like, that position doesn't even exist. So, but this is just creating the concept of the position, we then later on would have to decide if we were ever going to fund it or put it into a budget.
Then I guess my only comment on this position, and this comes from my unique experience, is everything listed in here is something the chief deputy does. So if we're changing and creating this new position, are we also changing the chief deputy's job description? And what should the chief deputy be doing? And I'm a little concerned with the language that's on the memo as well, that says that they're going to serve as a primary liaison to other government entities and the public. No, that's the elected official. Words matter. So I'm, I agree with the treasurer that there is a need to look at the positions in her office, but I have real doubts and questions about this job description, especially when you look at the other non-bargaining positions in that office. And I think they need to all be looked at and taken maybe as a group to make sure we're covering all our bases. Just my two cents.
Ms. Michaels?
I'm going to jump on that same bandwagon there. I take umbrage with it also, looking at this description. And as we tighten our belts with things, I don't want to be adding. And if we're adding, we're not adding these type of positions. And once again, this is exactly what the deputy was hired for, quite honestly. That's where this person's skills level or skill set is. And so I wonder what the trickle down with that is. We're telling other people they can't have another person here or there, you know. I don't, I'm not saying during tax time, they don't need somebody in there to clerk for them and help them with that kind of thing, but this type of a permanent position, this is something that already exists for the most part, it's maybe not described. And so I do appreciate Mr. Farney's discussion or comment saying that maybe the job descriptions as a whole in that department need to be looked at, but to add another person with this information is duplication, and we don't need that.
Was one of the, anybody from staff wish to speak to this?
I'll just say the chief deputy position was not submitted for review. This is the only position that was submitted for review from the treasurer's office. And just as information for you to do with what you want, ideally, if we start the comp survey and implementation process next year, we will stop doing this as well, because we can't keep changing jobs as we're dealing with that process as well. So I would imagine, as you might hear from other departments as well, who have concerns about that, part of the comp process will be reviewing all of the job descriptions and making sure that they work and they make sense. So if you didn't move forward with this today, it will by all means come back to be discussed again if, you know, we decide to move forward with the comp study piece.
Ms. Dr. Fortato?
Then I guess I would suggest that we move, not to turn it down, because I don't think that that's what anybody's saying, but that we move to postpone it until we can have a more robust comparison of the job descriptions to make sure we're not having duplication between the different jobs. So can we post, I hate to table things, because I feel like then they might just never come off the table. So can we, can we move to put this back into the finance agenda meeting, to have it brought forward on an agenda, like when that's the right, you know what I'm saying? Like, so like, kick it back, and so that we're not saying no, but just that we're going to revisit it at some later time.
Why don't you, why don't you table it per the outcome of the discussion on moving forward with the comp study?
Okay. All right. So can we move to postpone this until the first board meeting after the conversation of the comps, after the information is provided through the comp study? Okay.
Okay, so we have a friendly amendment by Stephanie. Do you have that, Megan? Okay, thank you. And do we need a second on that? Mr. Farney, thank you. And is there further discussion?
Just repeat the amendment, please.
Okay. It's short. Approval of the creation of a deputy collector slash partner engagement lead position in the treasurer's office effective January 1st, 2024.
To be postponed to the first committee of the whole after the comparison study of our personnel has given us the information that we need in order to carry forward that vote. In order to vote. That was too wordy. So the first committee of the whole after the comp study has done its work so that we could vote.
Just to be, just to be clear, and I'm not disagreeing with this, just to be clear. So let's have Megan read it, how she's going to put it in the minutes of what we're voting on, please.
Do you want to try reading what we, what we're voting on, Megan?
So I have that you're postponing it until the COW meeting after you have decided what you're doing with the compensation study.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Are we all kind of pretty much in agreement, we think? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. So that will be postponed somewhat indefinitely, but hopefully in the near future with a new effective date. Okay. Number 3B, approval of the creation of a mitigation specialist in the public defender's office effective January 1st, 2024. Do we have a motion? Ms. Carter and Bethany Van Nistherenot, thank you. And I'll note that Ms. Pollak, the public defender, has kind of given up part of her evening to join us. Huh? I'm not begging, but if, is there discussion? We've visited on this before, to be fair. Jeff, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, to be fair, we visited this before, and we all agreed to fund this. I just have a couple of questions about the qualifications. And I'm sure that Ms. Pollak will be incredibly articulate and then correct my thoughts. Thank you. I am so much in favor of having a mitigation specialist, but my couple of questions are on qualification, skills, and experience.
Mr. Wilson, is it possible for you to use the microphone in a way that actually makes sense? Can you move it in front of your mouth, please?
Just tilt it a little more towards you.
It's completely past you. Nobody can hear you.
That's got a really long, yeah, just tilt it a little more towards you.
It's quite a gooseneck.
Thank you, Mike. Should I turn it on first? How's that? Okay. Hey, so I had a couple of questions. I looked through this, and yes, 100% agree with this. But the more I thought about, and I thought about it, I'm wondering if there should be a couple of skill sets that may or may not need to be articulated. And one of them, I was wondering if there should be some conflict management or conflict resolution skills added to the skill set, unless there's no conflict whatsoever in this position.
Well, I would say that it is part of everyone who works in a public defender's office to deal with conflict. It is not a skill that is generally attributed to a mitigation specialist, because the only conflicts that we have are over disagreements with prosecutors that they cannot help with, and disagreements with clients, which we are responsible for. So they, there will only be one of them, unless like, you know, I'm hoping to hire a second one with the grant, but in terms of resolving intra-office conflict, I don't foresee them having a role in that.
All right, thanks. So it's my misunderstanding of the full picture of the role, so thank you.
No problem.
Jeff, I had that on my list the last time this came up. Is there any other comments or discussion?
I would say that this point of clarification, we funded the fringe for the mitigation specialist. I am coming up with the 50 from my grant, and I don't think we funded the paralegal. I think that's going to roll over if I get, when I get the PFJ grant, I will then transfer the social worker money into the paralegal position, is what I recall. So the paralegal is unfunded right now.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Farney. Since you're here.
Yes.
How's things going with the Safety Act? And I know these positions, we're supposed to help with mitigating some of the extra work. Just want to know how things are going in the PD's office right now.
Well, you know, the one thing I've learned in this job is that nothing is ever stable. So you think you got everything under control, and then something happens, and there's a fire, and you got to put that out, and you're constantly running around with a fire hose. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. Arraignment Court today went past 5:30. That is the, that is our kind of trend on Mondays, Tuesdays now, because weekend, you know, we fill up with people, and then they all have detention hearings and everything else, so it's lengthened the process substantially. I now staff arraignment court with two attorneys instead of one. I staff intake with two attorneys instead of one. So it's taking up a substantial portion of my employees' days. And arraignment court used to be, you know, intake from like 10:30 to 11:30 in the morning, and we get it all done, court from 1:30 to 3:00. Now we start intake at 9:00 AM and finish afternoon, and we start court at 1:30 and oftentimes don't get out until after 5:30. So we are actively working, there is a PFA task force with two judges, myself and the state's attorney, who are trying to figure out ways to streamline the process and make agreements so that we can not hold our union court staff over every single day, which is causing trouble, to be honest. So my hope is that we, as we streamline the process, we're going to maybe develop some morning court times, if possible, to try to deal with the overflow and schedule hearings at a better time. But in short, it's a hot mess. We're doing everything we can to streamline it, but, you know, the volume has increased and our staff has not. So that's kind of where we're at.
That was very informative. Thank you.
And our jail population has not significantly changed.
Oh, that's disappointing. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Approval, item number 3C, approval of the creation of the paralegal position in the public defender's office, you know, January 1st, 2024. Ms. Jen Locke and Ms. Jen Straub, thank you.
Thank you, Jen's.
Thank you, Jen's. Oh, no disrespect.
All Jen's. I love you all.
Is there, is there any discussion? I think Ms. Pollak kind of, go ahead, Ms. Locke.
I only want, I only want to say I'm happy that we can finally give you this.
Thank you.
It's been the dark ages since we brought you over. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, I add my thanks that you're carrying on a difficult position that you assumed in a crisis. There being, I'm seeing no other discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Pollak. Thank you for coming and staying. Item B, monthly fees report on page 126. I have no other business unless somebody else, yeah, we do. Wait a minute.
Wrong spot.
Thank you, Eric. I, you said something, we're going into closed session.
Yeah, that's in the other, other business.
Oh, under that other business. Oh, okay. All right. Okay, I'm moving, I'm moving. No other business, no, no chairs report. Items to be placed on the consent agenda are Roman numeral nine, A2, ABC, and G, 3ABNC.
3B and C.
Oh, that's, well, A is postponed. Yes, thank you, Jen. Okay. So it'd just be B and C. So, okay. Thank you. Chair Patterson?
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have other business. Is there any other business?
Yes, there is. Sorry, I was trying to move things along a little faster than I should. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to 5ILCS 120-2C11 to consider litigation that is pending against or on behalf of Champaign County, and litigation that is probable or imminent against or on behalf of Champaign County. I further move that the following individuals remain present. Legal counsel Ryan McCarty, Andrew Voss and Kimberly Kester, Director of Administration, Ms. Aljet, Director of Finance, Travis Woodcock, County Executive Steve Summers, and Recording Secretary Megan Robinson.
All right. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Locke?
Here.
Locke, is that a yes?
Lockshin, yes, here.
No, Locke, is that a yes?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Lockshin?
Yes.
Michaels?
Yes.
Pew?
Present.
Yes, sorry. Yes or no? Is it a yes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Smith? Store?
Yes.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thorsland? Van Nistherenot?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Esri?
Yes.
Farney?
No.
Fortato?
Yes.